Coming today to the Bloomfield Trustee, also known as Fire Show, tonight for June 12th. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, so we'll start with public comment. If anybody has a comment, please come on up to the podium and just give us your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Vladimir Corry. I live at 548 Rowan Oak Drive, and I'm here to bring to your attention something about the previous trash service that we had. On the first Friday of May, I put out a file cabinet to be taken. The drawers were out of the file cabinet, and when the trash men came, they took the drawers. They left the file cabinet. It was Friday, so I couldn't call your office to find out what went on. I called on Monday, and I was told that, you know, the supervisor would be made aware of it, and something would happen. Nothing happened. I called the next day. I mean, this went on for a number of days. Supervisor's coming, you know, if it's not picked up today, it'll be picked up tomorrow. Fast forward, it never got picked up. And I said, "It's heavy. It needs more than two people." So one person came out by himself, stayed there for 20 minutes, was on his telephone a good part of the time, left a sticker on it that said, "Over 50 pounds, cannot take it." Okay? So I then called back to the Public Works Office, and I was told that, yes, if it's over 50 pounds, I can't take it. I said, "Well, when were we ever informed that they would not take anything over 50 pounds?" People put out refrigerators, stoves, all kinds of things all the time, and don't tell me they don't weigh 50 pounds. Okay? So I was then told, oh, I then called the main office of GFL, and the person there said, "Well, this is the first time I'm hearing about it." I said, "Yes, because I've been dealing with the township, and I've been told somebody was going to take care of it." So he said, "Well, let me get in touch with the township, and I'll be back in touch with you." I got no call. I called the township, and the person there called me back and said, "Well, what you're going to have to do is call 1-800-GOTTRASH. They'll pick it up for free." I said, "They don't pick it up for free." "Oh, yes, if you call 1-800-GOTTRASH, they'll pick it up for free." A friend of mine then put something on the Internet, thinking that maybe somebody wouldn't want to come by and just pick it up for scrap metal. Nobody came, and so I called 1-800-GOTTRASH, and I said, "Well, you know, could you come and get it? And do you pick it up for free?" "Oh, no. Our minimum charge is $108. We will come out and give you an estimate." They came out, and they said, "Oh, it'll be $182." I said, "Oh, no, 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 no." You know, I was told initially $108. So they decided they would do it for $108. These two guys didn't have any belts, nothing to help them lift it. They had a truck that did go up so that they can push things onto it, but, you know, they were half a bobble short. They were not doing a good job in terms of getting it in. I said, "You've got to push it closer to the truck so that when you lift it, some of the weight's going to be on the truck so that when you lift the back of it, it'll go in." So they tried it numerous times, and then finally, they said, "Well, will you go in the truck and press the button to lift the back of the truck up so that we can get it in there?" And I did that multiple times. I offered them my dolly that we got this out to the street on, and it was only one person pushing the dolly that got it out there. And they said, "You know, if this doesn't go in this time, we're leaving it here." I said, "Well, I'm going to say a prayer to St. Jude while I go to the cab so that I press the button. For you, tell me when we're ready."
Ms. McQuarrie, can you please wrap it up a little bit?
So I said my prayer to St. Jude. That sucker went into the truck, and it's out of here.
Okay.
I gave them $108 cash. They said, "Oh, we will give you a receipt. What is your phone number?" I got no receipt. That went into somebody's pocket. I don't really care. Back to the matter was, I then called the township back because I said, "Please tell me where it was ever written that something over 50 pounds would not be picked up." "Oh, it was in the newsletter." "Tell me what newsletter? Go through the newsletter." "It wasn't in the newsletter." "Oh, it was probably on our website." "Go through the website." "Not on the website." How was I supposed to know? If we were never informed, do not do this to the rest of the community. With this new service, you better put something in that newsletter that says, "This is what the restrictions are. I got my bill today. I paid it for the whole year." There was not one thing other than to say they would pick up my trash weekly, and I was getting a senior citizen discount. You need to make sure that people know what they're going to provide.
Great. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did he get her name so that we can verify?
McQuarrie.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Mark Intocley. I'm a precinct three delegate in Bloomfield Township. First regarding item number eight, and outdoor roof space, please vote no. I think it's inappropriate to say water towers would be inappropriate in the community, especially along I-75, Bowers Farm, who would like to lease property to the township to put a water tower, if it was possible, according to Pat Watson. I think if water towers are not okay in the township, then an upscale on top of the roof, outdoor area space for evening activities also would be inappropriate. I wanted to congratulate the individuals in the fire department being inducted today and the individuals receiving awards. Congratulations. On that note, I also hope that with the release of the Gatsby files in early May, I hope the township looks into the unfair treatment of public safety. The pension fund was at 12% funded for the town fund and public safety combined. They split out the funds. Public safety is now at 10%, while the town funds are at 27%. Granted, there was a drop in liability for the town funds, but they're still would be well over 20%. I don't think the fine individual standing here should be treated like that or previous retirees. It's in the Gatsby disclosures. On that note, would we expect to see an increase in payments from public safety to the OPEB funds? And because it has to be up to 40% within 20 years, according to the documents submitted by the township to the state of Michigan. Another matter is the pension liabilities. We're now 83% funded, and what's the impact on the actuarial calculations and how much more will have to come out of public safety to pay for those fees? I think they need new equipment, and how do you do that? The last item regarding public safety is on page 35 of the audit. It's interesting to note that public safety in last year's audit had $14 million, had no interest income, while the general fund had $15.7 million in their account, and they had $325,000 of interest income. And then we go to page 55, and we see that only $23 million at the end of the financial year was issued in bank deposits. So why wasn't public safety receiving that income? I'd like to understand. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Is there anyone else? And just to let people know, we are actually going to be doing, there's been a lot of misunderstanding. I think it's because, you know, those of us that aren't accountants, it can be confusing when you're reading reports and misthrough some numbers. So our accounting director, our finance director, will be coming in July to explain, you know, some of the truth that isn't really getting out there, and also explain that we have gotten the best audits in history, and that actually everything has been funded extra every time we've had money, and to better explain that, like, you can't compare a fund with five people in it to a fund with 105 people. There's different liabilities. So since it has been said at quite a few meetings incorrectly, we're going to try and get the word out there. I think you all know how much this board and the community loves you, and I think you see that by we do buy you equipment because you need it. So unfortunately, when something's said incorrectly multiple times, the hope is that's only one or two people that misunderstand it. But just in case, we're going to have a full presentation in July when Jason can get that available to come out and teach people so that when something's misconstrued, others will understand it. So just to let everybody know about that. So next is to move on to approved board minutes of May 22nd. We've all had a chance to look those over. Unless we have any changes or discussion, I look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, we have swearing in of the new firefighters. So that'll be presented by Chief John Leroy.
Good evening. Thank you for having us all here tonight. If I could have firefighter Bobinski, firefighter Good, and firefighter Van Heck, please come up here.
Do you guys want to face that way because you're on camera?
Firefighter Good came to us through a lot of hard work from firefighter Hall. He met him at the hospital where he was currently working. He was in paramedic school at the time, and his dream was to become a firefighter. So through a lot of recruiting, firefighter Good was brought to our department. He is the gentleman here in the middle who came and enrolled with us and really liked what he saw, and over a course of time, he applied, and he became a probationary firefighter with us. Firefighter Andrew Van Heck is the person here on the left as I'm looking. He comes to us as a son of a current battalion chief. He's a probationary firefighter from a family steeped in firefighting tradition, from his brother, or his sister, his uncle, and his father. And firefighter Tyler Bobinski came to us by way of Lansing. He just so happened to drop off an application one day on a whim, and we were doing interviews the next day. So he came in and performed very well in his interview, and he wowed the panel at that time, and through everything, became a Bloomfield Township firefighter, leaving the city of Lansing. So it was a pretty good score for us in that ability. So if I could please have you, please turn around, and clerk Martin Brook will give the oath of office.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations on your achievement and welcome to the township, which will be official once we finish this last task. Okay, so I'm going to do all three together, and I'll say, state your name, and just say your names individually, but otherwise, just respond in unison, please. Raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
My name is Andrew Van Heck.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of firefighter, paramedic.
Of firefighter, paramedic.
For the charter township of Bloomfield.
For the charter township of Bloomfield.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You guys can stay there. If I could have firefighter Cameron Good's father, Wade, please come to the front. If I could please have battalion chief Alan Van Heck, please come up here. If I could please have battalion chief Alan Van Heck, please come up here. Oh, you guys want to introduce any of your family? Would you guys like to introduce your family? I always forget that part. Introduce your family, people that came to see you.
Who pinned me is my father, William Good. Dad. That's my mom, Kristen Good. And that is my girlfriend, Karen Tenckler.
My grandparents are here, my grandpa, my grandma, my nanny, and my mom and sister. My dad, Paul's here, my stepdad, Jimmy, my mom, Sherry, my girlfriend, Taylor, and her mom, Vicki.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Always good to thank those that brought them to us. So next, we have the fire department award ceremony presented by Chief Leroy.
Well, moving into the next agenda item. A couple of years ago, Chief Pachet started the awards as trying to show the appreciation, really show what the firefighters of the community do. And I tell you what, one thing that is very evident is the amount of work that these guys do or these people do without asking for anything in return. And we are really bad at passing up the line, what they've done. So the job that they do on a daily basis doesn't represent, isn't represented in the number of awards that are given, because the awards are the only one I find out about. And it really takes them to toot their own horn in order for me to find out about it. So we are really bad when it comes to accepting grace and gratitude. So with that, I only have two awards tonight, but they're both very meaningful, well, two service awards. Recently, I created the EMS Life Saving Award. We've always, it was always rolled into a community service type award, and it really needed, I felt it needed to stand out more so than what it did, because it represents going above and beyond and saving somebody's life that walked out of the hospital as a result. So tonight, if I could please have, for the first award, if I could please have Lieutenant Kevin Schute, firefighter, paramedic, Matt Zito, firefighter, paramedic, Aiden Guara, and firefighter, paramedic, Michael Best, please come to the front. On November 17th, 2022, Engine Two and Rescue Two responded to reports of a coach who had collapsed during a basketball game. Upon arrival, our crews found the coach on the gym floor in cardiac arrest. By standards, had already begun CPR and attached AED, delivering one shock. Our crews began their advanced cardiac life support procedures, shocking patient two more times, giving advanced cardiac medicines, and establishing an airway for the patient. Shortly after the second shock, the patient began breathing while also regaining pulses and consciousness. While en route to the hospital, the patient was alert and oriented. This patient was released from the hospital with no deficits. As a result of their actions, firefighters Michael Best, Aiden Guara, Matt Zito, and Lieutenant Kevin Schute are given the EMS Life Saving Award. paramedic Adam Phillips, and firefighter, paramedic Aiden Guara. On October 12th, 2022, Ladder Four and Rescue Four responded to a residence for a report of an unresponsive person. Upon arrival, they found bystanders performing CPR on an individual. The patient was quickly attached to a cardiac monitor and found the patient's heart rhythm to be in a shockable rhythm. The patient was shocked and administered advanced cardiac medicines and given advanced cardiac life support measures. After 16 minutes, the patient regained pulses and began breathing on their own. This patient was discharged from the hospital with no deficits after being treated for a 100% occlusion of the right coronary artery. As a result of their actions, these firefighters are given the EMS Life Saving Award. So, like I said, I know there are many more award-worthy moments that occur over the course of a year in the fire department. Do I wish that more could be recognized? Absolutely. But it kind of says a lot about their character that they just go about it thinking that's just part of the job, and it truly isn't. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody that's in this room for the job that you If I could please have Travis Smith come to the front, please. In 2013, this award was created for the person that went on the most calls for the year in the fire department. It's called the Mike Cummings Iron Man Trophy. Mike Cummings is a retired battalion chief from Bloomfield Township, and as a joke, they would always yell "Iron Man" when they were on his shift. So we came up with this trophy to recognize the person that went on the most calls throughout the year. Just for a comparison, the first year this trophy was given, the Iron Man Trophy, in 2013, the winner responded to 500 incidents. This year, the winner responded to 715 incidents over the course of the year. The winner of the 2022 Iron Man Trophy with 715 incidents is firefighter Travis Smith. And this last award is one that was recently created through the thought of supervisor Leo Savoy and retired chief Mike Moran. If I could please have firefighter Chris Hall come to the front of the room. He doesn't know he's getting this, so he's not going to be happy.
Look at my face.
But this award was designed to the firefighter that goes above and beyond normal duties from whatever they do on a scene, whether it's just something around the house, or they don't want to be recognized, we find out about it. In the past, it's, you know, you always find out that person that took money out of their own pocket and gave it to people for gas, or they just do things above and beyond. So this year was a little bit different. It's sad, but it's happy. Firefighter, paramedic, Chris Hall responded to an incident at an elderly veterans home. Firefighter Hall, who is an Army veteran himself, struck up a conversation with the resident regarding his service. While leaving the resident's home, firefighter Hall noticed that the individual's American flag was in rough shape. Firefighter Hall then went to the store and purchased a new flag for the homeowner and returned to his home and hung the new flag. On a side note, during their conversation, the resident mentioned a German beer that he loved and had a hard time finding. Firefighter Hall found that beer and purchased the beer for the resident, but prior to being able to deliver it, the resident had passed. But for going above and beyond the normal call, firefighter Hall has awarded the Mike Moran Eye Care Award. He is the second recipient of this award, and through the donations of Mr. Savoy and other members of the community, this is a funded award through our charities organization. So firefighter Hall has given a $1,000 check in his name for this award. Congratulations. And he won't say any words because he's not happy with me right now. On that note, that is all the awards that I have for the night, so you guys can quietly, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the evening.
Want to watch this? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So next, we have, this is a tough one to follow, but we have fire chief up there still for annual report.
I am still here.
That one got me.
Does this one work? All right. Now it's going to get quiet in here.
Yeah. Everybody laughed. Caught us off guard with that last one.
That was a little bit of payback for last year.
Maybe we should talk about giving more awards, though, because they do a lot.
Yes, we can find.
I know that they don't enjoy the accolades, but they deserve the accolades.
And I know that they don't enjoy the accolades.
Two or three times a year.
Well, what they do is just always above and beyond.
Yeah.
That it is.
So just want them to know we appreciate them.
And just so everybody knows, the awards that were given weren't as a result of them sending it up or the EMS coordinator sending it up. It was Oakland County recognized their awards, and it came from the hospitals. So that says, I mean, really who they are.
Yeah.
So the presentation of the 2022 annual report, not a whole lot happened in 2022. Just kidding. So in 2022, the Bloomfield Township Fire Department, here's our organizational chart, all three shifts. We have three shifts of 18, soon to be 19, two fire inspectors overseen by the fire marshal, an EMS captain, the assistant chief, and myself. Bloomfield Township has four fire stations. Station Four is located in the north end at Square Lake and Franklin. Station Two is located on the east side on Westview Road between Square Lake and Long Station Three is basically at Maple and Telegraph, and Station One is on the township's campus A little bit of comparison on the number of calls that each individual stations went on over the course of the year. You'll see that Station One has the least amount of emergency responses, primarily because it's the standard area that you saw, but it's got a lot of lakes in it with a lot bigger parcels of land. So the population's not quite there, and they also don't have any managed care facilities, which is a big driver of services in the township. Over 11 and 1/2% of our emergency responses can be attributed to five addresses in the township. So Station Two, which, when I started over 20 years ago, used to be the quietest station. As you can see, it is now up to the second busiest, and there are months now where it competes with Station Three. are months now where it competes with station three for the busiest number of calls over the course of the month. Station two's primary driver is the skilled nursing facility at Adams and Big Beaver, and that's their biggest driver. And then station three is the busiest, which is the, it has the most condensed population, lots are a little bit smaller. It also has two managed care facilities in their area. And that rescue proceeds up to Central's area to cover a lot as well. They are also mutual aid partners, not mutually partners, but that station is when Southfield needs an emergency response on a mutual aid, that's the station that gets called to. And then station four being the, it has a lot of lakes, but it has a lot of commercial area, so it's kind of a happy medium between all the stations, between commercial and residential. They have a lot of vehicle accidents associated in that area, and doctors' offices, things of that nature. So that's just a pretty good showing of where the stations are according with their number of calls that they go on. We've even looked at, you know, how do we manage, do we change response areas without affecting response time to reduce station three's number of responses, but there's really no good way to do that, because their biggest driver is their two managed care So over the course of, since 1989, this is the chart that shows where our progression. We started at 2353, and last year we finished at 6385. As you can kind of see, taking out the COVID year, we're on a pretty good plateau statistically. So, we haven't seen a huge jump in the number of emergency responses, but one thing that we did change last year, just to take note of, is the police assists. We were going on a lot of police assists that were in roadways that probably weren't needed, so Police Chief Gallagher and myself, we kind of reevaluated that to try to reduce the number of police assists that we are going on. So we're still going on I-75, the major arteries, but if the car's off the road and the police officer doesn't need protection, we've kind of scaled that back a little bit. At any time the officer can request it, but it's not being automatically dispatched. So we would have thought we would have seen a little bit of a reduction, but what you'll see is, in the EMS side, we've actually seen an increase in the number of EMS calls. So... So this is just a quick little month-to-month, it kind of gives you, you look for different patterns, and if you see anything, one of the big things was, why in January were we 100 calls more than the previous year, and there's no reason why. But, you know, but then July stands out, because in July of 2021 was a big storm year, and the big driver there was the wires down and the emergency responses related to storms and things of that nature. So those are the kind of things that creates the outliers, and you can kind of see what's going on with where we're at on a month-to-month comparison. And then the incident, the time-of-day breakdown, this just, what I wanted to bring to your attention was, is it doesn't really slow down here. It slows down from midnight to about 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, and then it just goes up exponentially from there. And then it really doesn't slow back down again until after 11 o'clock at night. So, for instance, tonight, while we were getting ready to all come here, 4 o'clock hit, and every station with every apparatus was out of service from almost 4 until they walked in the door here. They are going for the better part of the day, all day long. And even, we've seen a rise in the overnight calls as well. One thing that we've been trying, we've been keeping track of, a lot of, we've seen an increase in the number of, not just the number of fires, but the number of building fires has went up tremendously. COVID, we saw an increase starting with COVID in the number of fires. The data, fires are related to kitchen fires, items left on the stove, different grass fires, it could be any number of things. But the building fires, technically, as soon as it touches, is considered, as soon as it touches, portion of the structure. So like, it's no longer a kitchen fire if it burns the kitchen cabinets, a stove fire, cooking fire. As soon as it touches a member of the structure, it's considered a building fire at that point. And there's a whole bunch more information that's needed for the reports to really break it down. What we're noticing, though, is, over the years, the NFR system, which is our system that we report to nationally, has become really difficult to use. And in a meeting that, I was out at the National Fire Academy this year, and the U.S. Fire Administrator came in, they are going to be unveiling a new system in the fall that is hopefully going to make it so it's good data all the time, instead of trying to piece together the information and really applying it to where we need it. For example, right now, we don't even have, there is no way nationally to even track the battery fires that were happening. We've created a system in Oakland County and the state of Michigan so we can track it locally, but they're not tracking it at the national level yet, and they will be starting in the fall. So we've seen in 2022, it was a very busy year when it came to building fires. That can be contributed to any number of things. The lithium batteries is one of the driving. We've had several lithium battery fires. And it can be attributed to, more people are at home as a result of COVID, working from home. We have a lot of instances where people are working and put something on the stove and go back to work and don't realize that there's still something on the stove, things of that nature. So we're keeping an eye on that. The number of fires overall is statistically right, has stayed high since 2020, and there's no, we thought it was COVID, but now they're just staying high as well. One thing that you'll be happy to see is, obviously, 2021, we had a very bad winter/summer season, so the number of wires down was statistically way higher. And it returned this year to the normal level. And that's even given, you know, the ice that we had, I don't know what month that that was, but the storms that we had last summer, I think it shows that some of the clearing services that Detroit Edison has been doing is working to return back to, even though we had some storms, it did drop back down and didn't stay as high as it was before. Another thing that we have seen is the number of citizen assists. We commonly refer to that as the resident trying to age at home, where they're not injured, they fall, and they call us out, and we help them, assist them up so they're not, make sure they're not hurt, and help them back into bed, or help them maintain their mobility around their house like that. And we saw a slight drop, but not really that much. So that's just one of those things that we just wanted to show, that we do do for the residents in the township. This is the big one, that we're, even though we were, our calls stayed statistically the same over the course of the year, you can take the storms and everything out of it, we had a significant increase in the number of EMS calls this year, from 3495 to 3617. And that's not even, that's not transports, that's just calls for service. EMS incidents could be, vehicle accidents are included into that. So, this year, it was a lot higher than previous years, it's probably the highest on record. So that is the driving level of need for the services in the township. And then this year, the vehicle accidents have risen, as I mentioned last year, I think it's just a common theme with people, it's speed, it's not paying attention, driver patience is out the window. So we have seen a lot more vehicle accidents in the last couple of years than we ever have in the This past year, so we were up almost 200 EMS incidents and change, which accounted for an increase in 70-plus transports. That's really key, because that's 70, every time there's a transport, it means the ambulance is leaving the township. And it's going to take an upwards of 45 minutes to an hour of time for them to write their report, clear the hospital, and get back into service. So that's over 700 hours of time that counts for the ambulances being out of the township and available for other calls for service. So that's a really key driver. We are seeing a lot more calls to the managed care facilities, and that's because of, they can't get private ambulances anymore to do their transports. And given the way the callers come in, we can't deny them to go there and do the call. It's called in as an emergency, and per Oakland County, we have to respond emergent and take them to the hospital. They're kind of playing the system, and there's no way around it, but we're watching it and monitoring it as best as we can. So I kind of, that time with 70 more calls, 700 more hours, so this is kind of a breakdown of the number of incidents that occur and when they occur. Majority speaking, when you have six and seven incidents going on at the all time, the majority of those are during a storm, when we're chasing, all the units are chasing power lines, things like that. So they're kind of outliers. But there are a lot of times, the big one to look at is that, starting at the four incidents at the same time, that's 263 calls. And what that means is, that means that each, there's four incidents occurring, so in upwards, all four stations are committed at that point. We have nothing left to respond. We're using, that's when we're using our mutual aid partners at that point, to come in and assist us with either an ambulance, or we're breaking engines free from one scene to go to another call and like that. And really, 42% of the time, we're on more than two calls at the same time. That's a lot. That really shows why we need our mutual aid partners as much as we do, because over the course of the last several years, we're all relying on those mutual aid partners more and more and more. Bloomfield Township is a, we are very balanced. We give almost as much as we receive. So there is a, it's truly mutual when it comes to our partners, that we're not getting abused by anybody, we're not going to other communities more than we should be. Just, we work well together. And those mutual aid partners is the Oakway Mutual Aid Group. We could not, this day and age, all of us could not function properly without all of our partners that we have. This year, we added the Independence Township Fire Department, primarily as that's former fire chief Dave Pachaz is now fire chief in Independence Township, and he saw the benefits of Oakway with the training, the technical rescue components, the hazmat components, and also what we brought to the table. And they are like, they're a full-time fire department, like fire departments like all of us, and they join the organization. So without Birmingham, Ferndale, West Bloomfield, Waterford, Rochester Hills, Royal Oaks, Southfield, Farmington Hills, Madison Heights, and Independence, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs the way we do it. And as a prime example this year was the Oakland Hills fire. Oakland Hills, every single one of those fire departments was committed to us. In addition to them, Auburn Hills, through the MABUS organization, Auburn Hills, and some of the Northern End Fire Departments and Western Side of the County Fire Departments assisted us that night as well. So it just goes to speak how much mutual aid, and we all work together for the betterment of everybody in the community. So I just wanted to bring that point out for everybody to see. So like the future concerns, this is not just a Bloomfield Township concern, this is a fire service concern, is recruitment retention. There is just not enough people going into the field, and we are all competing for those. We all have more jobs than the number of quality candidates coming in. So it's just a matter of, how are we going to get through this until, it's going to be the state of Michigan, the fire service, everybody's trying to come up with ideas, and trying to recruit and retain, and coming up with programs to get people trained that want, or get people interested in it. But it's going to be, this problem didn't start overnight. This is a problem that has been coming for probably a decade, and it may take a decade to get people back interested in coming into these jobs. So it's going to be a long road. Another future concern is the rise of the lithium battery and the number of fires associated with it. We are seeing across the fire service, just in, even though the data is not there yet, we are seeing New York City fire departments going on one a week of electrical scooters. Obviously, we have the cars, we have, it's everything that comes with, you don't even realize, comes with a lithium battery. And how that these batteries are, they're not like the old batteries where it was one cell, and that was it, like your car battery. They are a whole bunch of, picture it like the size of AA batteries that are inside of a pack that are put together, and all it takes is one of those hundreds or thousands of little batteries to go bad, and go into thermal runaway, and the battery will begin what they call thermal runaway. Where I see an issue in the future in Bloomfield Township is the house systems that are coming. These are whole house systems, instead of using a generator in a power outage, they have a stored energy system. They're really big out west. Tesla is one of the systems that's, that is out on the market, is a big popular one. Whereas, it's a problem in Michigan, or a potential problem in Michigan, is these batteries, they can't, they have to be under climate conditions. So out west, they work great. They can put them on the outside of the house, the box, and everything's mounted on the exterior of the house. They're warm weather climate things, so they have to be in warmer climates. They're storing them in the basements, or they're installing them in the basements. And as these systems get more and more popular, I just see an increase in the risk, because of us trying to be able to get that, the only way to really is copious amounts of water or remove the battery from the equation, so it consumes itself. So it becomes very difficult from the interior of a structure to move, remove this to the outside. And then we're going to be putting people into these situations where they have to get into the basements of these homes, and it's a danger. That's for the future. They're out there, but they're getting more and more popular. And then, obviously, the rise of motor vehicle accidents, we're going on more accidents, but what we're seeing is, it's, we're seeing the increase in severity. It's the speed at which these are happening, and the number of times we're having to, we have significant injuries, jaws of life being used, things of that nature. That's really what we're seeing. Seen a lot of accidents in intersections with people blowing red lights. It's, there's really nothing we can do about it, it's just, it's a future concern, and given these, with the electric vehicles, they weigh twice as much. It's a lot more inertia, and when you hit something, it takes a lot more to stop it, too. So, we are prepared, we're training all the time on these, on the electric vehicles, and the new materials that are associated with these newer models, that's why you'll see later tonight, we're requesting a new set of jaws of life for the new sort when it comes in, that'll have the state-of-the-art type of higher cut pressures, can cut through these tungstens and these different type of, it's not just aluminum and steel that it used to be, it's all these hybrid-type metals that we're running into, magnesium. So those are the three big concerns that we're seeing on a regular basis, or I foresee into the future. I'll take any, and I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for tonight, and Lieutenant Kevin Bailey, and firefighter Brad Woodhall for all of their help in compiling all the data, and the information in the slides that were in the annual report, and all of those letters, and for all the work that they did.
So, anyone have any questions or comments?
I'll just say thanks for including our great photo for Fire Ops. Yes. That was really, I mean, that was probably my highlight of being trustee, so I really appreciate it, and Fire Marshal of La House and everything they did that day. And I'll actually speak to Oakway, and when we participated in Fire Ops, obviously, all the other participating fire departments were there, and just to see the camaraderie and the support there was something very special. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Stephanie said, because Pete was awesome, and it was an amazing experience, and I'm sitting there reading my packet, and it was like, hey, that's us! It was like surprising, because it seems like it was so long ago. It was an amazing experience, you and I talked about that recently, how much we both appreciated and enjoyed it. I'm wondering, I'm hoping, now that we have that new law passed effective the end of the month with hands-free, you're not supposed to hold your phone anymore while you're driving.
Hopefully.
So hopefully, that will help a So hopefully that will help a little bit with some of the distracted driving and the, um, cause I know we've all, I try not to, but we've all had our phone and not only that, if you drop it, that's a distraction. It's, it's for safety and, um, it's concerning what you're saying that it's more and more severity. I've seen red light runners. It's frightening. The people just like blow right through.
I'm sure most of us every night on our way home see at least one person go through a light that's clearly red. So.
One person went through the light and flipped me off as I was driving through it and almost hit me. I'm like, oh, right then.
It's a regular occurrence.
Yeah. It's startling when you stop on the yellow with plenty of time and then somebody is behind you and whips around you and goes through like on a stale red.
Yes.
So, um, again, just thank you for all you and your, your team do. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Great report. And thank you for all the information that you're providing to us and to the residents. And, uh, your department does an amazing job. I was able to witness it firsthand. As you know, my next door neighbor had a, a lithium fire, um, two weeks ago. And, uh, to see the trucks down the entire street and they took it very seriously. They were great with the homeowners. It was, we were out there one, two in the morning and, uh, they really were communicating to them and knew how upset they were. And besides the technical part of dealing with the fire, dealing with the homeowner was very impressive. So.
Thank you.
Chief. Um, I was at a program last week, um, and I was with Stryker and I was just talking with him and he looked at me and he said, oh, you're, you're from Bloomfield Township. I've seen your name. So, so I'm, I'm glad actually. And I, when I was at the fire ops, one of the things I asked is do, do we have the best of equipment? And in every area, when I was asking, we did. And I guess one of the things I'm, I see a lot of things that we're going to be approving tonight and I think we're glad to do that. Um, piggybacking, I guess, on the area of lithium batteries.
Yes.
I guess two things, uh, two questions. One, um, any suggestions on how people can deal with that as residents? Number one. And number two, in terms of minimizing risk. And number two, do we have the best of equipment? Um, or is there equipment to deal with lithium fires?
Right now, um, I've actually spoken to Carrie over at Cable and she's going to, Carrie Lizotte, she's going to be, we're going to be starting an initiative with, um, Township resident education with how to, first of all, you know, disposing of the lithium batteries and just some safety tips, um, associated with it. Uh, that's the first step is because people don't realize what they have. I taught, I was talking to somebody the other day and said, yeah, you're not, you shouldn't throw those away. And like, well, why not? I said, they don't realize even, even dead that it, once the lit, it's when damage occurs to the battery, the lithium reacts with the air, which causes the thermal runaway. So there's an education component that I think we failed as an industry, not just the fire service, but with the education component across the board. You know, this is not a new problem. This problem started a decade ago with the Samsung phones. When they put those, the first battery, those lithium batteries and the, you know, the airlines wouldn't let you fly with them and they were having issues. That was the first really lithium problem we knew we were going to have. So that's an education component will be forthcoming. Where our goal is to get a media blitz with every, um, every e-blast, every, you know, the, every mailing, things like that, where the residents, it's brought to their attention. Um, when it comes to the equipment that we have, really there's different, there's different thoughts out there. You know, some places have blankets that you can put over cars that were supposedly, if the car's on fire, you can, electric vehicle, you can put up this thermal blanket over it that will suffocate it. Um, they only work in certain conditions. Really the only way to put out a lithium fire is copious amounts of water. Back in the day, uh, a vehicle, a, a car fire would take about 500 gallons. We could put it out with one engine. We're having to hook to a fire hydrant now to put out a fire in a, in a electric vehicle. It can take up to 10,000 gallons of water to put out a fire. And then once the fire's out, there is a very good possibility that that fire will reignite because you haven't removed all the heat and the reaction is still going on. So the tow truck drivers and what they will do is they'll part, take it to their lot and park it away from anything. So if it does keep thermal runaway going, it's not going to affect anybody. Europe came up with a pretty good, uh, method of solving that problem. And when a car in Europe is involved in a, electric vehicles involved in Europe in an accident, they just drag it into a dumpster and fill it with water. So that's how, and they leave it in the water and they drop it off. It's like a, um, like a pod type situation. So we're catching up, but there's really no, we're, we're learning every day, something new comes out. And really where we're having an issue is technology, standards, codes are changing. The, the standards and the codes can't keep up with the technology. It's, it's changing so fast that you think you get something with solar panels that's going to keep it, say, you know, these lithium batteries and make firefighters safe. And then they change the technology and it's almost useless what they passed. Things are changed. That's how fast the, the building industry and, and the auto industry is changing. There are some things that we're looking at getting for, to make vehicles safer. Like, um, there's an item out there that we're looking at right now that to plug in because these electric vehicles are designed that if you're charged, your court charging cord's plugged in, that they don't allow them to go into drive. And it's, it's a sensor. So it basically senses, it's a, it's a dummy connection point that it senses that it's getting charged, but it's not. So we're looking at getting some of those for all of our engines, at least so that way the car won't, won't move if, if we have an incident with it. Um, but really some of that technology is, it's not proven yet. So as more and more vehicles and as more and more, uh, things happen, then we'll, we'll learn from them. And I'm sure that that, those will, as anything, as any industry grows, we're going to have a, uh, like, once everything's caught up, we'll have all those items out there that will be available to us to get. And we're just not there yet.
I just want to thank you. And I do think you should think about adding more awards because, um, this team is solid.
Yes.
And I love that you have the I care award because although they may think, well, it's just our job, that part's not.
Yeah.
That's going above and beyond. And the compassion that they show our residents is phenomenal. It is somebody's worst day, worst moment. They're fighting a fire and they're still also helping.
Yes.
So that is above and beyond. I love that award. And thank you to Leo Savoy and, um, Mike Moore for getting that out there.
Thank you. I think I get a break.
All right.
All right.
So now you get a break while we bring Pete up here. So next we have, uh, consider approval of fireworks display for Birmingham Country Club. And it'll be with, uh, Fire Marshal Pete La Jolla.
Thank you. I think we have, we have two tonight, right?
Yes.
We have Wabi.
Just one at a time. Yeah.
So I'll do Birmingham first.
Yeah.
Just like to thank, uh, thank you all for having me. Um, and I'm glad that the fire ops was a success for you. And I'm glad you, you, you liked it because it was a great time for us too. So thank you for that, for, for the future as well. If anybody hasn't done it yet, please, you know, take the time to do it.
This year, we're even sending Martin, we're sending Jason. Because I feel that being in charge of the purchasing, he should experience what he's purchasing. He's, uh, so far hasn't said no.
Okay. Um, we'll do Birmingham first. Uh, the date that the proposed fireworks at Birmingham Country Club is scheduled for Friday, June 30th at around 10:00 PM. The rain date, if necessary, is going to be Saturday, July 1st at around 10:00 PM. I conducted a fireworks site inspection at Birmingham Country Club on May 23rd and 2023. And according to all their information that they provided for us and, um, that they submitted, I do find the site suitable. It is a reoccurring event. Um, nothing's changed and all the precautions they generally take will be also at that event. Um, so it's my recommendation, uh, that this reoccurring event is approved by the board.
Any questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Shostak, supported by trustee Viki. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? That passes. So now we'll go on to the fireworks display for Wabi Country Club.
Okay. Wabi Country Club is scheduled for Friday, June 23rd at around 10:00 PM. And if they do have a rain date scheduled for July 7th at the same time. I, I conducted the fireworks site inspection, um, at Wabi on May 22nd. And according to all the information that they provided, again, this is a reoccurring event. Um, they haven't changed anything. So I do find the site suitable for fireworks and, um, as they described it in their proposal. So at this point and in time, I'm asking for the board for approval on this reoccurring event for Wabi.
There are any questions or comments?
So moved.
By trustee Burnett.
Support.
Supported by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? That also passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Andrea Vivier, Deputy Director of Planning, Billing, Ordinance to Consider Approval of a Site Plan Request for a Third Story Addition and Elevator Penthouse and Outdoor Roof Space for an Office Building at 4050 West Main.
This is pretty impressive that he's operating the computer from that computer. So I'm going to have to talk to Tom. Anyways, thank you. Um, good evening. Um, I'm here to present an application received for, um, the new office building that's currently under construction. Um, just behind 4050 Maple is a new office building located there at Maple and, um, Maple and Telegraph. This is, uh, North Maple, um, highlighted there in the purple on your screen, which is our office zoning district. Um, the owners of the property, Maplewood Office Park LLC have submitted a site plan application, um, to add a third floor addition of approximately 935 square feet. Um, so just to clarify, it wouldn't be an entirely third floor addition. Um, what they're looking for is, you can see on the elevations provided on your screen there, they're looking to add a rooftop amenity to this office building. Um, it includes a elevator, um, shaft, as you can see highlighted there, kind of in the lighter brick color. And then it also includes an enclosed area, as I stated earlier, is about approximately 935 square feet. So although, um, our ordinances don't have any other means to consider this addition other than a third story. Um, that's why it is being, um, presented to you as just that, a third story, a story addition. Um, this, um, the applicant, um, did present this to the, um, the planning commission. I just do want to note because they originally had submitted that their, the rooftop hours would be from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday. So I just want to note that when this went before the planning commission on April 17th of 2023, that the recommendation from the planning commission at that time was for these rooftop hours to be limited to 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday. So I just want to make a note of that, that that is the, the, uh, was the recommendation from the, um, from the planning commission. Aside from that, as you can see on your screen, there's the proposed, um, the proposed rooftop addition. Um, here's the roof plan. As you can see in this area along here, this enclosure represents that approximately 900 square foot of additional space. This area here will represent where the elevator is located. And the intention of the use of this space is for the tenants within this building to be able to have an amenity, a rooftop amenity, where workers and tenants of the building could utilize this space, um, just for some outdoor work or, you know, meeting with other, um, you know, staffers, just kind of a means to get outside, get some fresh air. Um, additionally, within the center of the rooftop building here is a mechanical area. These rooftop mechanicals will be screened accordingly with our ordinances. There'd be no, uh, visibility to the public of these, as well as no access from the rooftop, um, area into this mechanical area, which really takes up the, predominantly the entire center of the rooftop. Um, another thing to mention is that there is a proposed, um, stairwell, which is, is required, um, with the building code is to have two means of ingress and egress onto the rooftop. So there is a stairwell, which is also being proposed. And just to give you, um, an idea, this is the location along the east elevation, which would be the area that is closest to the immediately adjacent, uh, residential area, um, to the east, which is the, um, I believe it is the Thorn Crest, um, subdivision. So, um, with this in addition, they are proposing, which is actually better if you look at the elevation. So this is the stairwell, as I had, um, as just, uh, stated. So it does extend, uh, above the roof line of the building. Um, in order to provide some screening from the adjacent residential, they are installing, um, some evergreens on the rooftop and they will be providing irrigation, um, as they have submitted within their application is to make sure that those are maintained and healthy at all times. Um, cause certainly any impact on any of the adjacent neighbors is something that I know was taken very seriously at both the design review board as well as the planning commission. Um, this did go on beyond, um, those two, and they were granted their, um, their, um, requested variances at the, um, I believe it was the, uh, at the May 9th, uh, zoning board of appeals. Um, I can go through those variances. I'm not sure if that's anything that is relevant to the board at this time. Um, most of you have probably heard it, but it mainly had to do with extending beyond the, um, the height limit within the 01 zoning district, which was brought on by that third floor area that's enclosed that did, um, so they did, were granted a variance for exceeding the building heights within that district. They also received a variance for, um, just get a highlight here, what the variances Oh, and then also in terms of, we have a provision within our ordinance that only permits an elevator penthouse, which is, as I stated earlier, kind of the, the tallest portion, which is located along here. It's only permitted to be, um, 15 feet within the township and due to the, um, the mechanicals that are actually housed on top of the elevators now and some new design. Um, it is actually 16 feet tall. So they did get, were granted a variance for that height. Um, and then also because they are adding some ground floor area that we have to calculate the ground floor area that's now enclosed. It did render them short of three parking spaces. Um, however, um, there's still adequate parking between the parking lot in the front, which is 4050 as well as 4060, both lot, the one, the two buildings are owned by the same property owner. Um, and I also wanted to bring to your attention too on the screen, this was, um, where there were some questions previously at the planning commission regarding the site landscaping. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that on your screen here is the approved landscape plan that was, uh, that was, um, that was previously approved in, uh, 2019 when this building was, was approved. So this landscape plan will still be fully executed and completed in accordance with that original site plan application. So just to, um, just to clarify that there, there is still additional ground vegetation and trees that will be added and will be required. Um, with that, um, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I do know that we have Mr. Brian Nager as well as, um, Richie Atto, who's the contractor on the job. Um, they're here as well to speak, um, regarding the proposed use. Um, I do, I do want to state that out of concern for anything taking place on the rooftop, um, that would be beyond your standard ancillary, customary use of the people within the building to use it as an office, extended office area, that they would be required, um, to come to the township for a special event approval if at any time they wanted to utilize that rooftop for anything above and beyond the approved times as well as the approved use. So the, the applicant is aware of that. And I just want to bring that to your attention as well, that the consideration by the township board would be to also identify that that would be a requirement within the township. Um, and also, um, they have stated that there will be no additional lighting on the rooftop except for any code required lighting that will be located closer to the elevator in the enclosed area. Um, and then there was also a recommendation that there would be, um, no additional lighting that came from the planning commission as well as any no music or loudspeakers. So really, um, we're providing, the planning commission gave some direction in terms of expectations of how we can maintain this as the proposed use and not have any negative impact to the adjacent neighbors, but still be able to provide an amenity that I know the property owner can speak to in terms of it being a very desired amenity within the office market. Um, with that, that's kind of it, an overview of the purpose of the use, the design. Um, and I'm again, happy to answer any questions.
Do you want to come on up? And then while we're waiting for them to come up, can you also point out to the board, um, although we had one person that doesn't live near there, was against it today. You did reach out to the HOA and the neighbors behind. Um, and were they supportive of this? I, somebody at the design review board talked about that. So whoever can also cover that.
Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Nager, the owner of the property and Richie Atto, our, our contractor. Um, we, we did reach out to the homeowners association and, um, you know, throughout the process, I feel like it's been a, a lot of collaboration. So, um, I think that throughout this entire process, uh, they've been kept in the loop and had some suggestions with the greenery and some of the hours and some other things like that. So I feel like the process has really worked well here. And I think that we've, you know, we've got a product here that I think everybody, uh, should be pretty happy with. we've got a product here that I think everybody should be pretty happy with. So obviously, there, you know, it's, it's a budding a neighborhood, and that's a concern. And we, you know, involved the Homeowners Association, who's actually, they've got a very active homeowners association there, and they had some good input. And even though, I mean, I think there's, there's a few neighbors there that probably would have more impact than the overall neighborhood, but they've got a strong association and neighborhood, and they, they gave us some very, you know, valid things, and we incorporated that into the, into the rooftop, so.
Do you want to add anything else before we open it to questions?
I just want to note that the township would have been, the residents would have been notified through our standard noticing procedures, that everywhere within 500 feet of the property was duly notified, as well as the associations.
All right.
First of all, thank you for, actually, I can attest to the fact that you were, Brian, you were extremely receptive to the neighbors. I know when this was first presented, I had a lot of disagreements with the presentation, and you were extremely receptive. You listened to the neighbors. Can't make everybody happy, but by the fact that no one is here from the neighborhood, I think speaks volumes. And, but you did listen to the Planning Commission. You made numerous changes as far as the impact on the neighborhood, as far as hours. You're well aware of that, if anything goes beyond that, or the use, it'd be a special events type of application would have to come to the township. Also, the fact that this proposal really is going to have the use of the west end of the rooftop rather than the east end. The east end is, is very attractive with the landscaping, but that's not the area where you're going to have your tenants congregating, because everything is at the other end. So I think you've done a great use with the property, and you are a property owner, you have property rights, but at the same time, want to minimize your impact on the neighborhood, and I think you've done a good job with that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. All, all good points and very positive. And it's been positive with the neighbors, so, I mean, there were, there were even a few residents that are, you know, directly behind us there, and we, you know, we even offered to add a little bit more evergreens to the back there, so.
You were gonna do it along the wall, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So overall, very positive though, yeah, and good points that most of the, most of the, the impact will be facing Telegraph Road, so.
So I have a bunch of questions. This is new to me, because as a trustee, I didn't, I hadn't seen it coming. I know it's been to planning and ZBA.
I think I've seen almost everybody here, multiple times.
So, but I mean, the, the third-story rooftop, so what is the proposed space of this office building gonna be, that they, that you wanted 10 o'clock at night, Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. originally on Sunday? Because to me, that's a concern, that if it's an office building, after office hours, that would sound like use of congregating.
Yeah.
Cocktail hour, whatever, up there. And right next to a residential area, I mean, I think the idea, and it's beautiful, and I think it sounds like fun, but it is right against the residents.
Right.
Which is what concerns me. If it was like downtown Birmingham, I'd be like, you know, Telegraph, whatever.
So I, I think the hours were just to have a general, you know, general hours. I mean, somebody may be working late. I would, I would hate to think that if, you know, somebody was working in their office at 9:00 o'clock or 10:00 o'clock at night, that they couldn't go out, you know, upstairs and, you know, sit outside if it was a nice night. So if there's one person out there, you know, that happens, so it was more just to have a, a broad sort of hours, and I don't know if, if, if there are other rooftops in this, in the township, and if they have hours as well, but it was more just an overall, general, you know, set of hours, so. I certainly, you know, if it's a Sunday at 6:00 p.m., could there be people working in the office? Absolutely. They're gonna have key fobs, they're gonna be working in the office, but according to what we've agreed to, they won't be able to work on the rooftop at 6:00 o'clock. We would need a special, a special permit for it, which.
For anyone to be up there, not just a group.
Yeah, exactly. So again, I can't, I can't say that you're leasing an office in our building, and it's 6:00 o'clock on a Sunday, and you can't come to work. We, we still have to give those people access. So to avoid any kind of conflict or any kind of ambiguity, I wanted the hours to be longer. And, and I don't think, you know, I, I, I think that the hours should be more general. You know, I don't, I don't think there are going to be any issues there, and I think that, you know, we've agreed for any special events or anything that we would go through the process. So I wanted those as more of just a general, you know, general hour, so.
Okay, and the, I mean, from the pictures, is it, is it enclosed, or is it just a railing? Because it was kind of, I, I got the impression it was just a railing, like.
Right.
Like a deck, or is there some enclosure up there that they would be working indoors?
Well, the, the pictures are good, but again, it's, it's a little hard to absorb all the information when you haven't seen this, you know, multiple times. So basically, that, that structure that you're looking at in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
Is an elevator.
Right.
You'll, you'll discharge onto the, onto the, the rooftop there. There's also a staircase right there, so the staircase comes up, the elevator comes there. It's about 935 square feet, so that's sort of where you, you enter and exit onto that rooftop, and you would be, the, the, the rooftop is actually outside there, and it's facing Telegraph to the, to the west.
No, I understand all of those logistics. My only question is, is it just a glass railing, or is there actually an enclosed, like solarium structure gonna be up there? Because there's that little room like behind the elevator.
It's both, yeah. If you show that.
Yeah.
Should go back to the other one?
Yeah, it looks like there's a little bit of both.
So there will be. The, the solarium, what you're calling it, is, is about 935 square feet. And then as you exit that, there's the rooftop deck with the railing.
And will you put like, because the rooftop deck, I, I can't imagine, working on a hot day, like, are you gonna have umbrella tables or furniture up there, or, you know, like, what are people gonna do with that open deck space? It seems like it would be too hot, too windy, too cold, or raining to work.
I think we've shown some tables and chairs out there. You know, there may be some umbrellas if, if, you know, that they can open and close, but, yeah.
Okay, and what kind of office space is this? Like, what kind of businesses? Is it general, or is there something specific?
It's, it's general office space, and I think we're, we're allowed up to about 50% medical, so it could be a combination of, you know, an automotive company, it could be, you know, medical, could be, you know, dermatology, orthopedics, general medical office, but what we've been, you know, what we've been, you know, talking to, there's, there's certain interest out there, but what's been happening in the office market is a lot of, of shared office space, which is like a WeWork or a Regis. So we've actually done this concept in downtown Birmingham. So we own the building at 101 North Old Woodward, where the Starbucks is, and we did this, this Regis concept above it, which is a shared office. So that's actually what, you know, sort of driving, you know, this, this rooftop as well. So you have individual offices, and people are working from home, but also working from here, and it gives you a way to scale down the office. So instead of General Motors coming in there and renting, you know, 100,000 square feet, they may take 1,000 square feet and have a few of their employees work out of that location, so.
Sure, we're gonna see a lot of changes post-COVID, but I, I guess I just have concerns, and I understand what you're saying about some of the, the tenants, like the, the different, you know, options of what they might be doing in the building, but one of the things that was said was that if there was gonna be an event, you would have to ask outside the hours, and I did read the Planning Commission asked for the hours to be reduced. But it also said it's only for staff use and their guests. I, I guess if this was in downtown Birmingham, I think it's cool. Right next to the residential area, one of the, there were, the notes that I read, seven out of eight comments were opposed. People are worried about you, like, looking down in their backyards and houses. I mean, I'm sure that's not what it's for, and it might not be a common thing, but it is a little creepy that people could be looking down. I don't know, I, I have some concerns because it is adjacent to residential.
Agreed, and, and that's, that's when we went through the ZBA and the planning, we met with the neighbors, we, we addressed all of those concerns, and sort of, you know, we've explained to them, because what you're looking at on paper, again, it, it, it takes two or three times of looking at it to really understand it and how it functions. If you look at it from the neighborhood side, you'll see the screening that's there.
Right.
They're not, they're not gonna catch any of that noise, there's, there's no lighting, you know, so, so those things have been addressed, and, and that's why, you know, to echo the other commissioners' comments, is, is that, that's why, you know, there, there isn't a lot of people here to oppose it, because they've been involved in the process, and, and their concerns have been mitigated, so.
Okay, thank you. I, I just personally still have concerns. The three residents immediately most affected by that, are they all on board with this? Do we know? I mean, I would think they'd be here upset if they weren't, but.
I, I personally know all three of them, yes, and I've gotten positive feedback from them.
Oh, that, well, that's very good to hear, but.
Yeah.
You know, something that I've noticed is that over the years I've been on the board is that sometimes things get passed up some of the boards. Majority of things that go to ZBA get approved and move on, or Planning Commission, maybe there's a tweak, it gets moved on, and when it gets to us, if there's an issue, I mean, this is kind of the final step, and if we approve something.
Right.
Then we have to live with it, and so it, it's not really in my comfort level. I do really appreciate all your explanations, though. Thank you.
One, one thing I can add is that, that, you know, what you see on, on paper here and what we're discussing, we, we've been talking about for over a year.
Oh, and I know your, your original plans for 2019.
This has been 14 months that we've, you know, gone through it and revised it, and then gone through it again and tweaked it, and taken in neighborhood comments, and so it's not like, you know, this came up and, you know, we've, we've rushed this through in, in a couple of weeks. This has been, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about this, and a lot of opinions, and a lot of changes that have been made, so.
No, and, you know, I don't mean to take this for time, I truly appreciate that, and, and I think it's a beautiful building, and I think it's a really cool concept, but, you know, we have neighbors that have put in just a built-in pool, and they have adult rowdy pool parties, the police station knows all about it. Once it's there and it gets.
Right.
Used, then it's on the people that are, you know, impacted negatively by it, not that that, I'm saying that would happen often, but it, it's, I just have concerns still.
Understood.
Brian, thank you, and Richie, thank you for being here. It's a beautiful building. If you had put up the picture, the rendering with the, I guess that one is probably, maybe, well, that one is a good one. I, you know, when, when you came before the, I think first to the Design Review Board, we were concerned about the exposure to the residents. At that point, I don't, I, I think you looked at really enhancing and started with the arborvitae and put that as a shield, because if you're standing on the roof, you really can't see to the neighborhood, the exposure. Now, if you can go maybe to the next picture, the rendering. So the only way that you can really see, I think, is you're looking onto, I don't know, what, what's that street called?
We call it the bypass.
The bypass?
Maybe a Telegraph connector.
That's really, that's what you're focused on, and to look back to the neighborhood, you've got the arborvitae. How many feet taller are those?
It'd be four to six feet.
Okay.
Because they're, they're already gonna be in planter boxes, too.
Okay. So I, so I think that, that gets obscured, if not completely reduced. Also, when you came before the Design Review Board, you were asking for the 8 to 10 in the 18 on Saturday, and then we had some discussion as to having more discussions with both your tenants and the, and the adjoining neighbors, and also the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission came with the guidelines that are stated. Are those 8 to, what is it, 9 o'clock, and up to 5 o'clock on Sunday? Do those work for you?
Yeah, I mean, they work. I, I would like to have a little broader range, but I, I don't know if, you know, through planning and everything else, you know, I, I guess I would lean towards their recommendation, but if that's open for discussion, I, I would certainly like to have a little bit broader hours.
Well, so, so what we're looking at is, I mean, from Sunday, it's 8 to 8. You asked for, and what the Planning Commission suggested was 8 to 5.
Right.
Is that really, and, and again, from the weeknights and Friday and Saturday, it, you were asking up to 10, and they're coming down to 9 o'clock.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine. With Sunday, that's a little bit, you know, I just didn't want to have an issue in case somebody was out there at 6:00 p.m. on a Sunday, and we're having to call the police out there because an office tenant is out there, you know, doing some work, and, and something along those lines, so that would be the only concern, but otherwise, I, I was fine with everything.
Okay. And in terms of the lighting and the music and the prohibitions on both, you're.
No issues.
Okay, very good. So those are really complying with both the, I think, the concerns of the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, and maybe it's just because we had an hour of fire talk. Smoking not allowed up there?
That, that actually never came up.
Is that, is that a prohibition, Mike?
Fire marshal left.
Well, I know.
Luckily, we got the chief.
You don't believe it's allowed?
No, I don't believe it's not allowed.
Oh.
I, I think.
It's outside, outside of the building.
I think you'd have something posted up there that would say, you know, you, which is typical on any building, you're gonna say, you know, please, smoking is 25 feet away or 50. You don't want any of the smoke coming in to, you know, an interior of a building, so.
Well, I was just thinking that, you know, starting fires by, you know, cigarettes, because they do happen, so, but, though, that's my only question. I agree with the treasure keeps, I think the, the arborvitae and the, the, what's it called, sheet unshadowing, the screening. I think the screening is sufficient, and the fact that nobody is here to object, I think is, is enough for me, but, 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 everybody else?
Ally, actually, I just have one comment, because I sit on the ZBA, and whenever we talk about screening, we always have in our, if we're approving the variance, to say that the screening has to be, you know, healthy and there 12 months out of the year. So I don't know that this screening is gonna have that same.
Requirement.
Exactly, requirement, but I guess just to say to you that if they die and they're not there, to keep them, replace them and keep them healthy so that we continue to have a screening for the residents.
Absolutely.
And that was addressed at the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
That it was, that, that's part of it.
Okay.
We, we do have irrigation there, and, and again, you know, things like that, I mean, we're, you know, we're building a, a really nice building here, and we want this thing to function for the next 20, 30, 50 years, 100 years, and, 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 you know, we don't, we don't want to have a building that, that looks as nice as this and have, you know, dead trees up there. So, yeah, we would absolutely, you know, want to, and that goes, that goes along with, you know, you're building this nice of a product, you want to attract a nice tenant, a nice tenant mix, and, you know, I go back to the Class A sort of building. We're, we're not building something here that's, you know, it's, it's certainly gonna look good, it's gonna be well-maintained, and, you know, we, we, we hope that, you know, we get the, the rents to reflect that. So we're, we're looking for, you know, a really nice Class A office building that is not the office that was built 30, 40, 50 years ago, because we all know the office market is changing, and, you know, it's, it's, it's probably on the decline, if anything, but we're in Bloomfield Township in a A-plus location, and we're gonna build a gorgeous building here that, that hopefully will be here for years to come, so.
No, I personally was very thankful that my concerns are a little similar in that with neighbors nearby, I appreciate that you talk with them, because that immediately already starts that, that relationship you're gonna have together long-term, so I truly appreciate the work you did with that. Again, the screening was a great addition. I was the one that was a little worried about, although I love the rooftop, rooftop for the workers, because I used to have one, and it was nice to go out there at lunch. It was really nice to get away sometimes from your office mates and do work, so I appreciate that. I was just a little worried about the late-night hours, so I, I do appreciate that you're okay with.
Yeah.
The restricted ones, so.
Thank you, thank you.
I just, it's nice to see people working with the residents nearby.
I just want to make a comment. If there was, if there is any agreement to add additional landscaping, as I heard the applicant mention, we may, you may want to consider that as part of your motion.
Okay.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Do you understand you're gonna be adding additional screening?
Yeah, one last quick thing I just want to mention.
But it was, it was more, it was more discussion that, you know, if.
You can speak to the board.
Oh, but, well, it was just a discussion that I had outside in the hallway with, you know, one of the neighbors, and it, it just said, hey, if you're unhappy in a certain way, and if there's a tree that needs to be placed or moved, you know, then, then we can accommodate, and, you know, we will, so.
That's, that's great. So I, I also appreciate all the work you're doing and the, the good faith you're bringing to this process, and it's reflective in the design, the comprehensive nature of your conversations, and, hey, you know, it's your property, and I'm happy you're choosing to build a building here. You could listen to any broadcast about business, and they're talking about the extent that people are returning to office, offices, they're looking for places outside the central cities and.
Right.
Places just like this, so you're gonna have a great, you know, great tenant base, and, you know, you've been to Z, you've been to ZBA, you've been to planning, you've been to Design Review Board, I saw you there, I appreciate your time. your time. Did all that stuff before when you originally came up with the plan. It's a lot of work to get to this point, and just to be able to build a building on your property that you want to build, so.
Thank you.
It's interesting, you have to do all that, but in the end, you're coming up with, because of your commitment to doing it the right way with a plan that's meeting the support of the neighbors, and with all the commissions and boards you've seen so far, and I want to commend you for that, and I really like it. By the way, there is a rooftop, you know, establishment right across the street, across the street, across Telegraph on the other side.
Right.
That has a rooftop business near residential area as well that has worked well. We've not received any complaints, at least as the DRB, so, you know, they can do it, you can do it.
Yeah.
With all these conditions.
Thank you.
You also continue to be a good neighbor.
And we get to the vote, you need it.
I guess I would be, it's a beautiful building, like I said, I just, because it's right on top of residential, and if the upstairs patio, open area, were maybe half of that, like towards that west side, and not all the way to the residential side.
Well, again, I want to try to change your mind here a little bit, but can we get back to that bird's eye view? Just because I think it's a little bit deceptive of actually how big that outside area is. So if you notice the, the...
There's a pointer, if you want to press that button.
It's all on the side away from the...
So if you, if you notice, this entire area right here is all a screening of mechanical, so it's probably going to be a six-foot-high, you know, aluminum.
But to the, to the north and south of that is, would still be tables and...
All this is not even rooftop. I mean, that's just a regular roof. So your actual patio space is here, and then this, it just goes to right here.
Yeah, I guess...
So all this is pretty much void, and then all this is your screening with that staircase wall and the arborvitae's. So this pretty much screens off the whole neighborhood right here, and then this is all void.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's really, and then again, this is the mechanical. So I think that if you looked at it percentage-wise, I would say it's probably about 50/50 or less of the roof that's even being utilized.
Yeah, and that does help.
And it's more of the one, more of the rooftop to the, to the west, so.
Oh, definitely. It's definitely to the west, and it's also more towards the other building as opposed to...
Right, right.
And again, I hate to be the difficult one, but I do have concerns. Things get built, you know, pickleball courts get built, pools get put in, and then people, you find some people that are disrespectful, and then, you know, the recourse is much harder.
Understood.
I've seen the police in my neighborhood many, many times because of some problems that started with the pool, and some people are not cooperative. So that is, I think it's beautiful, and I appreciate all the effort that you have.
Thank you.
And to, I know there were about five or six variances.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Unless there's another discussion?
Unless there's more discussion. First of all, as has been stated, you've been through the zoning board, the Design Review Board, the Planning Commission several times, which is a tough group to be, to get through, and I could just, and it's not me, it's all the other people on the Planning Commission are very meticulous, very detailed-oriented, and you were able to satisfy the Planning Commission, and with really not any changes here. I would just reinforce again on the landscaping. If any residents, as you stated, have concerns, that you are agreeable with them and work with them. Of course, as Stephanie has stated, and we talked about it, the Planning Commission, if there's any diseased or dead arborvitae, is you're replacing, which I'm sure you're going to do with the amount of money you're investing in this building. And I really, again, applaud you for working so well with the neighbors. It makes a much better situation when the petitioner, when the developer works with the neighbors. And as, again, as I stated right at the beginning, no one is here, and it says it all to me. So I thank you for being so receptive and working with everybody. With that said, I'd make a motion that we approve as presented, along with the additional landscaping items I mentioned.
Neil, I'll second that. Would you just state what, the hours?
The hours that Andrea had presented.
So that would be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Sunday, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Support.
Motion by trustee Barnett, support by treasurer keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
That does pass, six to one.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to all the boards, but Andrea and Patty did all the work.
Brian, when do you plan on starting?
We, yeah, we plan on getting right back to work, because the interest is ticking away, and the construction costs only keep going up. You'd better hurry before we go bankrupt.
Talking like a true developer.
Hey, good luck. Great-looking building.
I'm telling you. All right, so we're bringing Chief Leroy back. Got a little intermission there, John. So next, we have to consider the approval of purchasing a Sutfin fire engine for the 2026-2027 budget year, because we are that far out in build times.
Yes. So hopefully, these shall go, hopefully, a little bit same as the last ones. So the Sutfin engine is for the 2026-2027 year. It's the, it will be the fifth Sutfin engine that we have. We have two currently, we have two on order. What, the good thing about this is, is it standardizing the fleet. It's going to allow for the mechanics, efficiencies on the mechanic side, efficiency in parts, things of that nature. The issue that obviously everybody is worried about is the build time. These build times are getting more and more outrageous. This is up to 38 to 44 months. However, it's, I did do some due diligence here because of these build times and these prices. I did informally ask other apparatus providers at the conferences that I went to. They're all at the same point. A lot of, what's happening is the ARPO money is coming in from all over the country. These manufacturers can only make upwards of 150 to 200 custom trucks a year, and it's just slowing everything down. One thing that I did have start adding to these contracts is a date that we won't accept the truck if it comes in early, so it won't throw off our budgetary reasons, so it's up to them, the Sutfin Corporation, to slot us in, so it will fall under the parameters given to them in the contract. This truck is, like all the other previous ones that we're doing, is done through Sourcewell, so it's the group bidding. It takes out the RFP process. It's a standardized truck that everybody bids on, all the manufacturers do. It allows us to speed up the process to do that. You will see that the price is $861,720, which is, I know, difficult to swallow, considering that, you know, five years ago, our truck, the first truck that we bought was in the neighborhood of $497,000, I believe. So the price is just the price. But they're also guaranteeing that price over, that once we sign this contract, it locks it in for the term of the agreement. There's no going back. It, not to influence your decision, this offer's valid until Wednesday.
Think fast.
Yeah. No, we've been trying to get this on the agenda, and so Wednesday, of course, is their quarterly, and it's going to get, go up again. So, with that, I'll take any questions on the Sutfin engine.
I'd like to make a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the Sutfin fire engine for '26-'27.
Support.
Motion by trustee Murray, support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have, considering the approval of purchasing a Braun ambulance through Kodiak Emergency Vehicles for the 2025-2026 year.
Yeah, Braun's a little bit quicker. This will, if ordered, will go in the 2025-2026 budget. This vehicle is identical to the two, the three that we currently have on our order that we haven't received yet. Two are scheduled to come in by the first of the year. A third is scheduled to come in in the next budgetary year after that. This will complete the cycle of replacing all of the current frontline rescues that we currently have. Both these apparatus purchases are meeting with our vehicle replacement schedule that we have, and all of our frontline rescues, with the exception of Rescue Four, are all well over 100,000 miles now. So by the time that these apparatus come in, all of these apparatus will be over 150,000 miles, two of which, the two in best shape, once these apparatus come in, will be rotated back to the reserve status. I take any questions? This, this truck, too, is also purchased through Kodiak Emergency Vehicles and based on the Sourcewell group purchasing that we've done with all of our previous apparatus.
Are there any questions?
The motion approved.
Trustee Barnett has the motion, support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, we have, consider approval of purchasing four Lucas CPR devices from Stryker Corporation.
Yep. The Lucas CPR devices that all of you have seen at the Oakway Fire Ops is an integral part of our operations. All the CPR, all the patients who need CPR, this device does it way better and more efficient than any person can, in a safer manner in the back of an ambulance on the way to the hospital and on scene. The first Lucuses that we received were purchased over 10 years ago as a result of the AFG grant that we received, and they are the first version that was ever created. The newer versions that we're looking to upgrade to, we'll talk to Bluetooth technology, to our new monitor, cardiac monitors that we received last year as part of the AFG grant. So this just continues on with our current mission as well. So these Lucas, the version ones are being replaced. They're over 10 years old, and it's, we can no longer get parts or maintenance service on them, so that's why we're looking to replace them now. Stryker Corporation is the manufacturer and sole source provider of their equipment, so there is no, no distribution network or anything like that, so they're the only place that we can get them from.
Are there any questions? John, I'd like to make a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Schostek, support by treasurer keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That also passes. And next, we have, consider approval of purchasing five PowerCot ambulance stretchers from Stryker.
These two are equipment that we're replacing. In 2009, we received an AFG grant to purchase the current stretchers that we have. These stretchers are part of a two-part system. All of the ambulances we purchased now, including the one that we just approved, have what we call a power load system, which assists in the loading of the patient. And this PowerCot is the helping of lifting the patient physically off of the ground. It reduces the number of injuries that potentially happen to the personnel operating them, as well as, it's a safety, increased safety for the resident on the cot itself. We've had the current model, it was the very first generation, again, that was out there, and we've always been one to act on technology. They have worked marvelously. We have had zero issues with them. Again, we're just running into the fact that we can't get the parts, and it's time to replace, and over, it's a 12-year-old cot. With that, I would take any questions on the PowerCots.
Any questions? Can I look for a motion?
Motion to approve purchase of the PowerCots.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by treasurer keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next is to consider approval of purchasing the Hurst hydraulic extraction equipment.
Several years ago, we switched from hydraulic tools, which are attached to a port, kind of almost the size of a generator. It moves hydraulic fluid through hoses. At the time, it was the latest and greatest technology, and when the first generation of battery tools came out, we switched our model to the battery tools. Over time, the battery tools have since, the materials in the cars have changed even more, and it's time to upgrade the next set of hydraulics with a RAM, which is a, which is a extension device that can push a dash off of a patient's victim's legs, a spreader which opens the door, and cutters which we would cut apart the car with. This set is $35,000, and it's the latest technology, allowing for the latest materials out there tested against it. This set is for the SOAR truck, which is scheduled to come in hopefully around January. And the current SOAR has a built-in hydraulic system, so obviously now this will, it's a space-saving and allows us to continue forward with our, with our mission. They're $35,000 for the complete set. It's through McQueen Emergency Group, which is, which bought out Apollo equipment, and McQueen is the sole source for Michigan, or southeast Michigan, for this equipment. And the letter is, the sole source letter is attached.
Questions? I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion approved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Schostek. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
This next one will be a roll call vote. So next is to consider entering into a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681H to discuss material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statutes, specifically an attorney-client privilege, written letter, legal opinion. And with that, motion by trustee Schostek.
Support.
Support by treasurer keeps, and let's do a roll.
Trustee Barnett?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
Yes.
Trustee Faqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schostek?
Yes.
Treasurer keeps?
Yes.
Clerk Brook, I'm yes. Supervisor Walsh?
Yep. Yes, sorry. So we will be back shortly. Well, can't guarantee shortly, but we will be back.
And now we have, I don't, considering the proposed letter of agreement with the, oh, wait, that was a little one. Sorry what happened. The new agenda, do you have a new agenda one? It says D E L C, which isn't right. It's not D E L C. Is it just the Barnett?
Where's Labor Council?
There we go. Consider proposed letter of agreement with the Government Employees Labor Council, Bloomfield Township, Department Heads and Deputy Department Head Union. Do either of you want to speak?
Sure, I can speak to this. This allows for a new, two new positions.
I was reading wrong, sorry.
Sorry.
This allows for the additional two positions. One would be the Assistant Deputy Treasurer, and one would be the Assistant Deputy Clerk. The reason that this needs to go to have union agreement, or this allows for a letter of agreement which modifies the existing agreement that we have with our department head, Department and Deputy Union, and which then will allow for both of these positions. And the positions are really temporary in nature. It allows for the orderly transition in these two departments. Previously, the treasurer, in the treasury budget during the budget time, we talked about that we could have a, the deputy is looking to retire, so having an assistant deputy then allows a shadowing period to work with the current deputy. And as a deputy, you can only have one deputy, so in terms of hiring for that position, there then needs to be an assistant deputy, and this allows for that position, and the union is in agreement with that. The same would be then true for the clerk's department, as the clerk also has a deputy that the clerk shall appoint, just like the treasurer. The, in the instance that the clerk's department has a period where they need continuity or consistency or shadowing, it would allow for that same position in that department. Martin, is there anything further?
That's exactly right. We added, you have the need now, I don't have any, there's no planned or anticipated departure in my department, but for uniformity and because I think the training is a good idea, this is a good solution to accomplish that, and I support the amendment to the letter agreement to the ZBA.
So I'll make a motion to accept this.
Motion by treasurer keeps.
Support.
Support by clerk Brook. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, we have approve, approval of the payroll and vouchers. Unless there's any comments or discussions, I'd like for approval to the June 12 P D.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Schostek.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then on our last, motion by clerk Brook to adjourn.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you, everybody.